Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, May 9, 2022. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colicetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Coisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the April 25, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantive corrections? Okay. Well, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, Sharice.
Can we possibly change the discussion of the Ellis subdivision sewer issues to be further up in the agenda? Because we have a closed session, I was wondering if maybe that could be exchanged? That we move E down to the discussion?
We do need to do the closed session immediately after the presentations. We could do the Dr. Ellis discussion after that. Does that work?
Right after the?
Right after the closed session.
Closed session?
Mm-hmm. Does that work?
That'll work.
How long do we anticipate the closed session to go? Because I had the same question.
It's a fairly discreet issue that we... So it's not expansive. I don't think it'll take too long.
Okay. Thank you.
We have an attorney standing by, so. Okay. And then we will have the student research report presentation first before general public input. Okay. So, Dr. Ellis.
So that'll come before council input and communications.
Yes. So could I have a motion to move the Dr. Ellis presentation before council input and communications?
I'd like to move that the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issue be moved to come right behind a closed session on the agenda, but before council input and communications.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaeha. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. Alrighty. We will move on to presentations and public input. And the first up is the student research report on community-driven approaches to gun violence. And I'll turn this over to Chandra to introduce our guest presenters.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of introducing the Community Data Course class that was... that took place on U of I's campus this past semester. Twelve graduate students at the I School participated in this course, which came out of council's discussions around community violence solutions. This group looked at violent solutions across the country and chose four cities... it was four different groups, and chose four cities to look at the solutions that those communities came up with, who had significant decreases in gun violence around their communities. So tonight, we have Dr. Chamie Yang and four students to present to us a couple of those solutions that they found. Dr. Yang?
Yeah, just pull that, and it's magnetic. It'll come right off. Oops.
Thank you.
Hi, dear council members. Dear council members, Mayor Marlin, and citizens of Urbana, it's great to meet you, and thank you for opening up a space for us to make a public presentations today. My name is Chamie Yang, and I'm a postdoctoral scholar at the UIUC School of Information Sciences. And I have been running this class called the Community Data this year. And our short presentation today is going to be based on the student research findings this semester that came out of result of taking this class. And as Councilperson Bishop has explained briefly, Community Data is a graduate course that's in the School of Information Science, but it's also designed as a student-driven project that focuses on fostering the students' research skills and also importantly, helping them learn through community engagement. And for this reason, I'd like to thank city council members, especially Councilmember Chandra Bishop, Councilmember Colicetti, and Grace Wilkin, and Mayor Marlin for visiting our class earlier this year. So for the past four months, our students have been looking at the cities and towns across the US to collect the best... some of the existing best practices that have been working at a community level to prevent the rising issues of gun violence in the country. And the... and especially, we were interested in the models that look at the underlying root causes of gun violence instead of the ones that react to the after the fact. So the students also have produced their findings in a form of white papers and the community reading list for anyone who's interested in learning more about the findings from our research. And they will all be made publicly available in the coming few weeks. So the present-
Could you speak more into the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. The student presenters, sitting next to me, Sarah Unrow and Gori Balasubramanian, they're respectively going to present a quick summary of their research and their findings from the city of Oakland and Detroit. And I hope their work can amplify and reinforce some of the existing grassroots efforts that are already existing and growing strong in our community in the city of Urbana here. So...
Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about Oakland. So Oakland, since even before the pandemic, has had a very steady decline in gun violence. And to basically kind of learn more about their strategies, we kind of worked... we kind of worked towards speaking with people across different stakeholders within the city. So we spoke... we spoke to Tonya Carter, who is the East Oakland Violence Interrupter at Youth Alive, which is a nonprofit organization. We spoke to Darlene Flynn, who works as the Director of Department of Race and Equity at the City of Oakland. And then we also spoke to the Counselor at the Oakland School District and the Communications Director for Councilmember Lauren Taylor. And we basically, to learn about Oakland City's model of addressing gun violence, we interviewed all these people who kind of address and work together on prevention, intervention, and community organization. So based on what we kind of learned from our conversations and just like looking at things throughout the course, we recommend that we take... the community take a restorative approach. So basically, how do we empower the community to repair the harm, heal the community, and focus on community building in itself? So this can be implemented in our recommendations by reinvestment of community resources in youth-informed trauma care, education, and workforce development in order to prevent gun violence. We've pulled up some quotes from the interviews that we did that were pretty representative of the diverse views that people had on these key aspects. So one of them was technology. While community activists who are working with technology were very pro-working with technology... sorry, very not were pro-working with technology, but the city was. There was some distrust in working with police, but at the same time, the city was really insistent on working together with the police. So there was like divergence in their attitudes towards working with police. And finally, optimization. There was this idea that the numbers really need to speak for how the gun violence reduction rates go. But when we spoke to David Husem, who is the Restorative Justice Counselor, we kind of learned that the numbers can't really, really reflect the community-based restorative work that's been going on. So finally, I think like in summary, just talking about the practices we found to be most helpful was restoring, healing, and investing. Specifically, this reinvestment could look like youth job programs, so economic opportunities for young people such as summer job internship opportunities. Another would be quality programming, which is ensuring high-quality schooling, including after-school programming, and education for incarcerated youth. And then finally, trauma... violence induces a lot of trauma on individuals and the community. So a lot of these programs include focusing on increasing the resiliency amongst young people suffering from trauma. So this is what we found out especially worked really well with Oakland.
All right. And I worked with a group that focused on Detroit, Michigan. So we spoke with three members of the organization, Faithfully Organizing Resources for Community Empowerment or FORCE. And they work with a network of community organizations to provide culturally relevant care to those most affected by gun violence in the city. So our suggestions are summarized on this slide. Adopt a public health approach to combating gun violence, viewing it as a public health problem by prioritizing investments into community-driven initiatives, similar to Gary's presentation, and recognizing community leaders as experts in this work as well. So their definition of a public approach... public health approach to gun violence is to view it as something that's infecting people. Violence is being contagious. Our interviewee, Zo, clarified, he doesn't mean that there's something wrong with individuals. It means an illness like having a cold or the flu. And so what's needed, then, are interventions that can lead to the transformation in the lives of these community members. So investment looks like a lot of different things, but recognizing community leaders as experts and where those can lead. So when asked what resources are most urgently needed, one of our interviewees, Skreel, told us that the first biggest thing to do is to invest in mental health. I think the mental health aspect covers everything. He noted in particular that there was a lack of investment in mental health resources within the black community. And Zo, his experience is aligned with this imperative. He shared how he didn't receive important information about mental health skills or resources as part of his formal education. He received that kind of education in prison. He said he was like Batman. He had to get all of his stuff together, learn how to use all of this stuff, and use it to the best of my ability. Not to fight crime, I'm fighting the thoughts. He expressed a desire to have received information about mental health resources earlier in life, and he cites this lack of access as one of the reasons why community violence occurs, because individuals lack the skill sets to do otherwise. In addition to mental health services, it's necessary to recognize the expertise of community leaders. We spoke with Aleah, the Executive Director, who told us that members of the community understand more about the specifics of violence in their communities than anyone else. She said in every space, there are different hotspots for violence. It could be a community park or a particular house. It really takes somebody who navigates that community on a regular basis to lift up what those are. And Zo refers to this information as community IQ, someone being able to identify and meet the needs and concerns of every community member. He said it's having a community IQ and understanding that everybody's input counts. The focus on community is essential. This last quotation is his as well. I truly believe that community has the solutions to our own issues. And so to summarize, this overall approach, we think is worth pursuing. We can summarize it as more investing, less arresting. By adopting a public health approach, you can address gun violence here by supporting efforts already underway here in Urbana, providing things like providing mental health support and generally looking to the leaders that are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have time for a couple of questions. Council has questions. Chris?
Did you guys have a chance to evaluate the City of Champaign's blueprint?
So that was not in the purview of the class, but there are other members who live here that have looked at it.
Yeah. So that was not specifically-
Speak into the microphone, please.
Sorry. Yeah. So the City of Champaign blueprint, we know that document exists, but that was necessarily the central focus of our class. So our students were working on the communities and the cities and towns that are outside across the US, but not necessarily the Champaign. But as a result of the discussion, that was very fruitful and productive in this class. We were kind of interested in being more involved and continuing this project forward through the next year. And if City of Urbana is interested in creating Urbana Community Violence Blueprint, the students in our class will be happy to contribute and help with the resources necessary to draft something like that for the City of Urbana.
We could do one more question? Mary Alice?
Thank you very much for all your work. I've seen some of the projects from these previous iterations of the class, so I'm really happy that you chose this topic. I'll try and be as brief as possible. So I know that in Oakland, that talk about the school district and most of the school districts within the United States have separate boards, as does the Urbana School District is completely separate from the city. So I'm wondering if you dug in a little bit to that piece? And then my second question, which might not be appropriate for the two of you and your projects, but I'm wondering if anybody in your class looked at communities of similar size of Urbana?
I can speak quickly to the Oakland question. So when we... when our conversations with our interviewees, they focused more on their day-to-day tasks with their roles and their approaches. So in our conversations, a lot of the systemic things, like are you... like what's the school board like? Or how do they fit in part of the bigger system? Were not part of our conversations. But that's definitely something that came out of the conversation was that there's a lot of different people who... decision-makers in the process. So that definitely is a pipeline stopper. So the... so we had four student groups that looked at... so I divided the entire class of 12 students into four different groups, and we had a student group of two... three students per group. And I assigned them to look at different regions in the US and S map, the West Coast, East Coast, South and Midwest. And so Gori was part of the West Coast group, and Sarah was the Midwest. So we had another student group that looked at the city of Pittsburgh, and also another student group that looked at the West Palm Beach, which is a city that's much of a smaller size in Florida. But I don't know if these number of a population necessarily compare exactly with the town size of Urbana. But one of the kind of major premise of our class in general was that recognizing that each of the cities and towns have their own local context and the histories. And maybe some of these models that work in this particular context does not exactly transfer in, you know, the context of City of Urbana. But what was kind of productive was that there were concurrent theme across these four different groups and similar keywords and themes like trust-building, healing, community-driven, and recognizing the experts and models that are already existing in the local model, local level. So I think these recurring themes and what the students are emphasizing through their presentation, especially the emphasis on the public health perspective in gun violence initiative, and really looking at and framing this gun violence issue as a public health issue, was some of the recurrent findings that came out of as a result of our research, regardless of the local context. So I think that was some of... that would probably be some of the useful takeaways, I would like to believe. And I hope that will be useful for our-
Well, thank you very much. And when the white papers are available, you can... can you provide them to the city? And then we can-
Yes.
We can share them as well, as well as the reading lists.
Yes. So those documents will be made available through the Community Data Clinic website in the coming weeks.
Okay.
So yeah, I will share those links with Councilperson Bishop as soon as the link comes available, because yeah, we're working or redesigning our website. So once these documents are publicly available, we're going to share them with you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to public input. If you wish to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone. And you'll have five minutes per person.
All right. Al Macs Axelrod, City of Urbana. I'm speaking to you tonight in my capacity as Campaign Lead of No Ameren Shut-Offs. Again, a zero-dollar, all-volunteer coalition of 54-member organizations and counting, spanning the state of Illinois and adjacent states. We've won five utility shut-off moratorium and $195 million in less than two years automatically dispersed to residents. Despite 4,745 cases today, our seven-day average increased in new COVID cases to 5,154 cases a day. For people unfamiliar with how the COVID data looks, if you look at Illinois' COVID caseload on a daily basis, you see a seven-day pattern. Monday is one of the lowest days of the week, next to Sunday. Our COVID caseload today for this Monday is nearly double that of last Mondays. 4,745 today, 2,422 last week. The seven-day average in cases, as I mentioned, excuse the cross the week, it's also because it's robust to noise. That is to say, if this was an outlier, our seven-day average is still up because the last seven days have also been higher. And there's some misinformation that continues. People still believe, after nearly two years, that this pandemic interacts seasonally. That is not true. Look at the Texas and Florida summer 2020 caseloads. They had pandemic spikes during that time. New York is having a pandemic spike right now, as are we. It's just increased slower and more sustained. There are driving factors, of course. It's no coincidence that New York and Flor... and Illinois, excuse me, are increasing right after their winter utility shut-off moratorium ended. Despite the fact that there's this $80 million utility disconnection avoidance program two, again, created juxtaposed to pressure that we have been exerting on the state, their narrow eligibility criteria again leaves vulnerable households who are getting shut off who get sick, in contrast to UDAP, the original program last year. Again, three prior years, anybody who had received a utility subsidy was covered under the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, the original. Only the people who are currently receiving utility subsidies this year get that automatic benefit. I've been sent two utility shut-off notices, and I haven't even been looking that hard for them, one of which is going to be shut off on Friday. So when I'm talking to the city council about advocating to the governor, about increasing the eligibility criteria for the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program two, you only need to look at what happened when Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program, the original, was enacted. It caused a downward pressure on our COVID caseloads, and the lowest caseload we have ever seen in this state followed during the tenure of the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program. This is significantly less radical than a moratorium. It also requires no further money from the state. They just have to change that one criteria. I also want to mention that, again, I had told this to the City of Champaign, there are 12 utilities responsible for a disproportionate amount of utility shut-offs in this country. And out of those top 12, Ameren was number six. The situation for our pandemic caseload is more sensitive to utility shut-offs relative to other states due to that over-representation. New York's seven-day average of deaths per day doubled over the last month. They're going to have 500 people die each month right now. There's no reason to expect differently for the state of Illinois. Also, despite the fact that we are number six in population, we have a COVID caseload higher than state number five, Pennsylvania, as well as a seven-day average of COVID caseloads higher than Texas for two weeks straight, and no indication that that's going to change. So if you haven't been acting, you need to act. If you've been acting, please reach out, and we'll figure out how to do that more effectively. Thank you.
My name's Julie Watkins. I'm an Urbana resident, and I live nearby. And I was watching on the livestream, but came here immediately because there's issues and I was missing things. And I just wanted to mention that, that it's whatever reason, and I hope what gets onto YouTube is the full thing. I hope you have the whole video, because I think there's important stuff being talked in. I want to see all of it. I hope I could go back and see what I missed. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to address the Urbana City Council?
Can you hear me? I just wanted to... My name is Eldris Melinda Carr. I just wanted to say that here in support of the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, being part of the equitable distribution of funds, and we submitted information, so I just wanted to say that. And probably will have some things to say later after we... not at this meeting, of course, but after the presentation is done. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to give input? Okay. Seeing... All right. We'll move on to council input and communications. Any council members have comments? Okay. Oh, Chandra.
I just want to truly thank the class at the I School for their work and their input and presentation this evening. I really think that they came up with some good ideas. I wish we had had time to hear our four groups, but I look forward to send you all the entire presentations. I think that there are some good concepts that the city could support, so I look forward to hearing more input from council and administration on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Jaeha?
First, I just want to make sure that the public could hear that there's a technical difficulty, so we're still having the conversation about Dr. Ellis subdivision. We're just waiting for it to properly load, so it's still coming. I also just wanted to say how much I appreciate the students doing that research. I look forward to reading their white paper and seeing the research that they have collected so that as we are moving forward with these discussions, and hopefully we'll get back on track with our RFQ, I think it'll be really helpful information for framing future discussions. So thank you to Councilmember Bishop as well for organizing that presentation for us.
We don't have any unfinished business. We can go ahead and do reports of the Standing Committee, at least through the... I guess we have nothing on the consent agenda. Councilmember Hersi?
Okay. So it looks like I'm going to end up... anyway. Oh, coming from the Committee of the Hall for Approval to for City Council, on the regular agenda- to for City Council, on the regular agenda ordinance number 2022-05-017, ordinance revising the annual budget, budget number seven omnibus, submitted to council for approval.
I'll second. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
And then, I believe, since it's budget, Diane?
Mayor Marlin?
That motion passes. Yes, that motion passes. Next item.
Number two, ordinance number 2022-05-016, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Five, Building Fire and Flood Safety Codes, merging Building Safety Code Board of Appeals and Property Maintenance Structures Code Board of Appeals, submitted for approval to City Council.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, second, moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. I don't believe we have any reports of special committees, reports of officers. Carol?
I just wanted to announce again, I had mentioned it a couple of weeks ago, but we're having this mixer between contractors and subcontractors who might be interested in bidding on one of the construction projects that either the city has in terms of the fire stations, or the county has in terms of the renovation of the county plaza building, or the park district in terms of building the health and wellness center. And that will be the morning of Tuesday, May 24th, at Phillips Rec Center. We're starting at 7:30 a.m. And if you want to come for the little short program, that'll be at eight, so you can sleep in to get a little extra sleep. But the whole idea is just to have people come and meet each other. And as I had mentioned, Head Start Marketing, which is Mariah Madison's marketing firm, is handling the promotion of this for us. And we provided her with a list of more than 50 small contractors that are women-owned and minority-owned businesses. And then we have about a dozen prime contractors who we're also inviting. So, we've all put our heads together to generate what is a pretty big list, and she'll be handling the promotion of it and doing follow-up emails and phone calls with everybody. So, we're hoping for a good turnout, and it'll be a great collaboration with our partners, the park district and the county. And if we can get the school district involved, they have something as well, we'll do that, too. Thank you. And I think you all got invitations to that, to get it on your calendar.
In a look ahead to next week, we expect the Regional Planning Commission to present to City Council a summary of the public input, the results of the survey, community survey. So, that is part of the ARPA process, and that will actually finish the ARPA public input, part of the process. And we'll get an update on the technical issues? Almost there. All right.
I apologize, everyone. Tried to beat the tech. By bringing a jump drive, brought the wrong jump drive. Yeah, I'm just, I needed to save it as a show so that it comes up better. There we go. Okay, again, apologize for the inconvenience. Bear with me here. So, we're here to talk about the Dr. Ellis sanitary sewers. And myself being unfamiliar with this issue entirely, being relatively new, I had to do a little historical research myself, so I thought we'd just walk through that together, just to bring anybody up to date that doesn't have a representation of where we're at and what we're doing here. So, as you'll see on your screen there, this is the Dr. Ellis subdivision. It's west of Cunningham, south of University, south of, I think, Bradley Avenue there. It was completed in three phases, as you can see, that are highlighted here, built from the south to the north. And sanitary sewers are the primary thing we're discussing here tonight. So, what I wanted to do is just provide an overview of the function of the sanitary sewers and ownership. This is a drawing of kind of the schematic of how this operates. We have sanitary sewer mains out within the public right-of-way typically, or in backyard alleys, or in easements. And that portion, which is green on this draft, is owned by the City of Urbana. We operate, own, and maintain those portions, and that's what the sanitary sewer benefit fee goes to pay for. The blue portions are currently owned by the property owners. They're responsible for carrying your wastewater away from your residence and into the main line to then eventually convey to the treatment plant for treatment and discharge into the creeks. And just to show, you know, part of the sanitary lateral, service laterals are within private property and part are typically within the public right-of-way here in Urbana. So, I just wanted to go back to the beginning to really try to wrap my head around where we are and what's happened that I can piece together. So, the original construction and annexation of the Dr. Ellis subdivision was in the 1960s. At the time, the city of Urbana didn't have a planning department, extensive building codes, subdivision or land development codes. The city was consulted with at the time because this fell within the one and a half mile extraterritorial jurisdictional boundary. The blue that you'll see on the screen was actually the city boundary at the time that Dr. Ellis was being developed. So, it was just outside, but nonetheless, just outside of the city limits at the time. Very limited documentation on this, again, probably because we didn't have the extensive planning departments and codes that we have nowadays. But based on the documentation I could find, there were some very sparse construction documents, plan documents of these, and specifications. What I found in the specifications was that it was referencing design standards at the time. So, I would assume that it was designed to meet the standards of the time. The other thing is all the phases of this, which is not typical today, but all the phases of this were annexed post-construction. Typically, you know, our process today, we're reviewing and approving these things ahead of time, or filing formal annexation agreements to do so. Dr. Ellis subdivision, the first subdivision, the review and council approval happened in 1961. It was constructed and then annexed in 1962. And that's this, like, dark yellow portion here. The Dr. Ellis second subdivision was actually annexed, and it was reviewed as a single project, which included this green area, and I believe Tremont Street. And then, for some reason or another, it was annexed in two different pieces. I don't know if it's because they went ahead and built out Ellis Drive ahead of time, and then built Tremont after the fact, or why that occurred, why the annexation happened in two steps. And then, Dr. Ellis third subdivision is everything there to the north then. And the third and the remainder of the second were all annexed together in 1969. Again, all the reviews and things happened 61 through 62, then construction, and then sometime later. The first one, the annexation happened pretty quickly thereafter. The second one, the construction took place probably in the early to mid 60s, and then annexed later in the 60s at the end of it. Staying with the history, this is just going to talk about what the city has done with the sewer system since that time, since the original construction. You'll see here, we've got a list of a number of lining rehabilitation projects that have taken place in the area from 2005 through 2014. And through that time, so, it was, we've lined by 2014, about approximately 82% of all the sewers that are owned by the city within the Dr. Ellis subdivision. This, just to note, this blue one traveling north-south, that is actually a UCSD line that we do not own and maintain. They maintain that as an interceptor. But what you can see is, we have, we've reviewed and we've actually rehabilitated a number of these lines in approximately 50 years of life, which really is not an uncommon expectation. A lot of our sewer systems aren't old enough to know that, but the general consensus within the industry is, you know, 50, 60 years, you're probably looking at some substantial rehab with your sanitary sewer systems. And then, 100, 120 years, you're probably looking at potentially full replacement if you cannot rehab again. For perspective, the rest of the city, all of our other sewers that we own and operate, 24% of the rest of the city's sewers have been lined at this point. So, we've actually done more lining here in Dr. Ellis than we've done citywide at this time. I did include one specific sewer main spot repair that the city did perform on Tremont, and this was the result of root infiltration. Typically, if roots infiltrate a private sanitary lateral, the city's not getting engaged on that. It's not impeding flow from the rest, from the other properties within the city, so we're not getting involved. In this instance, this root infiltration actually was impeding the sanitary sewer main that was traveling down the street at this time. And as a result of construction, the crews, because of the scale of construction and the location of the sewer taps, the crews were required to, you know, remove and replace a section of our sewer main, as well as portions of these laterals that were located and damaged within the excavation for the construction of that repair. And then, in 2020, we've done some additional televising along Ellis Drive and Eureka Street, and found that these sewers are in pretty good shape still. The next history part of this is just the public input and coordination that we've received. So, a lot of the concerns started coming, you know, about 10 years ago. We had the People's Concern Letter to the Urbana City Council in 2013. We had a petition submitted to the Urbana City Council in 2017 opposing the reimbursement program that was created. 2019, there was a meeting between Dr. Ellis and subdivision representatives, alderperson Sharice Hersi, Mayor Marlin, and city administrator Mitten. And in 2022, we just received additional documentation to the Urbana City Council on behalf of the Dr. Ellis subdivision committee for resolution of problems. The summary of what we found in these public concerns that were issued to the city were a concern for sewer mains on private property, a concern for a lack of equity in the area, a concern that private expense for infrastructure in the public right-of-way was happening, and a concern that there was a lack of upfront capital for reimbursement programs. So, the other thing I want to touch on that is related to history is really where the city has come between their research and policy modifications on sanitary sewers. In 2007, staff presented alternatives for possible modifications to the policy. They were looking at alternatives to address, you know, how do we help people pay for these expensive repairs on their sewer laterals that they're not prepared for. And the options that they looked at were really service lateral insurance alternative, which is common of, like, Illinois or American here locally offer something like that, that you pay a small additive to your bill, and then if you have a problem at some point in the future, they're going to come repair it for you. And then, the pavement reimbursement alternative, which ultimately was the one that was selected. The no-action alternative was not selected. They felt that something needed to happen at this time. And at the time, I included the ordinance number in there for reference, but really, the summation of this is, they had two parts of this program. One was to eliminate illegal sanitary connections to storm sewers so that we were increasing our water quality. And at the time, it was for 50% up to $4,000 of the total cost of those repairs to eliminate those. And then, for sanitary and storm lateral repairs, so anybody's lateral having damage or needing repair, it was going to fund 50% up to $3,000 for the backfill and pavement restoration costs, generally because the backfill and the pavement cost are what really drive prices up on these laterals. And the city wanted to participate in that to try to help offset some of that inequity. 2013, after the People's Concern Letter to the City of Urbana came out, the city passed another ordinance to repeal the previous ordinance. And it really just more or less modified the previous ordinance. So, I'll go back here real quick. Instead of 50% of $4,000 for the total cost on the legal connections, they were now just going to pay for the pavement and backfill, backfill and pavement restoration for those as well. And then, they increased the lateral cost from 50% up to 75%, and from $3,000 up to $4,500 for the backfill and pavement. I think what they had found at the time was, you know, this is not supportive enough. This is not impactful enough. Later on in 2013, staff present, I think, I think when all this came out, there was a request for research, and it just wasn't done. They tried to put this in place to justify that, and then they asked staff to do more research on this and provide us more data. So, staff at that time researched policies of the sanitary sewer lateral ownership within the public right-of-way throughout other central Illinois communities. They looked at maintenance and repair programs in central Illinois communities who own and maintain the sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way. And then, they looked at what the financial impact would be if the city was to assume ownership of these sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way. The outcome at that time, the council amended the city code and repealed the ordinance and updated the city code to, really, they just removed the 75%. They, at the time, they said that they were going to just go up to $5,000 now for backfill and pavement restoration to try to address the challenges of paying for those expensive repairs that end up requiring advanced backfill and pavement for the owners that have laterals that cross city infrastructure. And then, 2017 to current, 2017, the city received the additional petition that we discussed opposing the reimbursement program, felt that there was a need for additional adjustment. And the outcomes of that ordinance were no change relatively to eliminating the legal sanitary and storm connections. But now, they've eliminated the cap of what it would support. But what it will do is now support up to 95% based on the fee schedule below. And this fee schedule is intended to conservatively estimate the cost of pavement, backfill, things like that. And it ends up, a lot of times, that this 95% of paying for just these components covers a bulk of the entirety of the cost for those repairs, is what we've found. But this also simplifies the administration of filing these reimbursements. It's easier to go take physical measurements and make sure that this works rather than trying to work through invoicing with specific contractors on every single piece and part they do. And then, in 2019, there was a meeting between Dr. Ellis subdivision representatives, alderperson Sharice Hersi, Mayor Marlin, and city administrator, which time, there was a memo from the city administrator detailing the findings at the time with no recommended policy changes. So, that, I believe, is the end of the history that I got. I'm sorry, it was, there's a lot there. But I just wanted to try to be detailed because that's one thing that I found, you know, we didn't have a good comprehensive of where have we been thing. So, I wanted to get through that first before we dive back into the sanitary laterals themselves. So, moving on, I want to address these one by one, just to give a baseline for everybody. So, sewer mains on private property was one of the initial concerns. What we found in the Dr. Ellis subdivision is, all of the sanitary sewers are within the public right-of-way, except for these two that you can see here. And these have recorded easements that allow them to be there for us to operate and maintain them to serve certain properties. A lot of the sewers, as you can see, they're offset on one side of the street or the other. You know, some of that is just a basis of design from engineering standpoints. But for reference, you know, typically speaking, and this is not everywhere, but your property lines, it's not the roadway. It's not even necessarily the sidewalk. Usually, there's additional space there. You know, 60, 66-foot is a kind of a standard right-of-way, but that varies. And it really has to be determined by a professional land surveyor to know that. But this is, you know, essentially our parcel map showing you just the relative location of these sanitary sewers versus the approximate property lines. You can see the property lines are more or less, you know, anywhere from a couple feet behind the back of sidewalk to probably five or six feet on the south side there, as you can see. The next big thing here to talk about was the lack of equity. And what we found here, and this was in regards to property owners having to maintain a sewer lateral that crosses the street. So, they have to maintain a longer lateral. Their service line crosses the street, essentially driving up costs to maintain that and operate that cost, in comparison to somebody that either has a sewer in their front yard, or a sewer potentially in their backyard. And what we found, and this is actually a map from one of the previous presentations, but essentially, what we found is about one-third of our sanitary sewers are constructed within the streets. About one-third are constructed within the parkways, or the sideyards outside of the streets, but in the right-of-way. And then, about a third of them are constructed in the backyard alleys or sideyards. So, the Dr. Ellis subdivision being constructed the way it is is not unique to the subdivision. And if you look throughout the city on this overview map, that may be a little bit different. And if you look throughout the city on this overview map that may be a little bit difficult to see, but you can see we have areas adjacent to each other, abutting each other with this same situation where some are within the streets, some are within the parkway, some are in the backyards. And it, and some of that depends on existing infrastructure when things were built and extended, and some of it depends on topography and other challenges with that. This is just for reference. The Dr. Ellis subdivision is the snapshot in the top. And then down here is down by Florida and, what is that street? I can't read that. Vine, I believe, or no, Race. That's Florida and Race. But you can see that we have all three within proximity to each other where we have some back alley sewers, we have some within the roadway, we have some within the parkway. Another challenge of, you know, one, one of the things when they talked about the equity was, you know, we want the sanitary sewers to put it down in the middle of the street and then everybody's got the same thing to deal with. One of the challenges with that, and this is more from an engineering design perspective, is trying to fit all of your underground utilities within this space and have functional areas. So, we created this exhibit just for reference, but, you know, typically with the, there's water and sewer separation requirements that, you know, sanitary sewers can't be next to distribution main, water distribution mains, they have to be at least ten feet apart. Really, the, the way the IPA views it, storm sewers and sanitary sewers should also have a ten-foot separation. But what I've tried to illustrate here is, you know, typical subdivision, probably Dr. Ellis at the time, these were very common utilities that were being installed. Sanitary sewer, storm sewers, water mains, electrical duct banks, gas lines. And as you can see, just in a sixty-foot right-of-way, there's a lot of overlap here already. So, sometimes you're, you're, you're stuck to the constraints of trying to miss other utilities. And a big part of that with like sanitary sewers and storm sewer systems is they're all gravity-fed. So, the idea is, we can't, if we have a conflict, we can't avoid it. We have to follow the gravity path, or the, or the system doesn't work, or we have to put pumps and things that get more expensive and harder to maintain in. Which we do have some pump stations, they're all owned and operated by UCSD here in town, but typically, you want to try to be strategic with that and extend as much gravity as you can. I think the one big point to take away here is the city does recognize the inequity of this, of different locations of these sewers. And the primary financial burden of that on the longer laterals costing the streets being the pavement and the pavement restoration, the backfill related to those items, that, you know, we, we, they've tried to develop these reimbursement programs to address that inequity. And the second bullet I kind of touched on already is the gravity, gravity system design. It's not always feasible or optimal to locate sewers right in the middle of the streets. You know, if I was designing a sewer today, I would actually try to avoid it just because it has traffic implications when you have to work on it. It's more expensive for the public as a whole to operate and maintain those. You know, there's existing proposed surface elevations that dictate where and what you can do with the gravity system as well. You know, and I think the one point to make is the city has recognized this and they do offer some funding assistance options for these things. The primary, the, the third issue was private expense for infrastructure within the public right-of-way. This is true. You know, there is, there are private lines that run within the, the public right-of-way, and that requires, you know, private equity to pay for those type of things. The requirement for this to happen is not uncommon. In 2013, they pulled the, there was actually thirteen, I think Matt Toon didn't reply, but of the ones that replied, one-hundred percent of them were operating the same as Urbana, where they operate and own the mains and individual property owners operate and own the laterals. There are some communities out there that do own their sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way. The research, I think, in the 2013 memo talked about, typically, this is going to require a higher sewer rate because it's just more infrastructure to operate and maintain. And some, a lot of those places did some things differently. Some of them put, tried to put cleanouts as near to the property line as they could and called that kind of the delineation point. Because that becomes the other hard part, is delineating, you know, now where's the actual property line without getting a PLS involved, which just adds cost to it. So, some considerations for owning the, the sanitary laterals within the public right-of-way. Some of the challenges outside of just the fact that more money is needed and, because we're maintaining more infrastructure as a whole, is we'd have to get some new specialized equipment because everything we operate currently is not suitable for the sizes that laterals are, four to six-inch lines. We're typically operating and maintaining eight-inch and above mains, and that's, it's a whole different set of equipment to do that kind of stuff. The more challenging delineation between public and private, if we don't, if you don't have installed cleanouts at the property lines, you don't really have a way to access, to review, or maintain those without accessing every single private property in town. But I don't think that we're going to be able to blanket cover an easement to allow everybody to do this. And then the additional staff, really, that all kind of ties into the money stuff, needing additional staff and money to actually maintain. You know, it's about 250,000 feet is what I estimated. Right now, our system as a whole is about 528,000 feet. So, it'd be almost a fifty percent increase in the length of pipe that we're maintaining. Then there's some additional inequity challenges, and I think we're going to be faced with those, however this, however we're operating. Because if we now take this over, you know, if we're not taking over backyard sewers or a portion of backyard sewers, you know, those get expensive too because they, they're very challenging to access. You know, a lot of people, unfortunately, you know, build fences and things like that. I'll say unfortunately from a sewer maintenance perspective, you know, build fences and things like that. So, it, access becomes a real challenge with getting in to maintain those things well. If the city were to take, consider taking partial ownership of the sanitary laterals within the right-of-way. The 2017 estimate was about $70.80 per property owner per year. Our 2022 estimate is closer to $109 per property owner per year. And I've kind of highlighted some differences because that seems like a big jump. Kind of the, the big, the biggest difference between the two was the premise that the 2017 was assuming that, you know, the level of service that we were keeping the rest of our sanitary system was, you know, perfectly adequate at the time. What we did is we tried to treat it as if it was an asset management approach like we're pursuing with our capital improvement plan, and not saying, what are we doing, but what should we be doing? So, if we're going to take this over, we should be doing it right. So, that's, that's the, the main difference in this. So, we've targeted, you know, a lifecycle replacement of a hundred years, major rehab, so maybe lining of a lateral at fifty years. Reactive maintenance would be like miscellaneous spot repairs that come up. We spend about 200K per year as the system as a whole right now. So, we estimated about $60,000 or something like that. And then preventative maintenance, so, you know, periodic cleaning and root cutting and some things that happen on normal sewer laterals at a cost of $3 per foot, which is consistent with some of our cleaning inspection costs for our main lines. All that being said, what that boils down to, it's about seven hundred, a little over $700,000. Currently, there's a little over 11,000 user accounts that UCSD maintains in the City of Urbana. That number, we probably have to flesh out a little bit more because there, some user accounts could have multiple users. But I did, I wanted to be conservative in this estimate to start, so we started there. And that's about $63 per user per year. The additional costs, and this was, I incorporated this because the 2017 incorporated the idea that we would be installing cleanouts at every property line, and I wanted to make sure that they were apples to apples. And the cost of doing that at about sixty-eight percent, so that would be anything within the public right-of-way, so that would be parkway and street sewers, which is how we get to the sixty-eight percent, and approximately $1,000 per service to install a new cleanout at the property line. So, we have an access point that's essentially a public access point, not a private access point. And that added another $45 per unit. And that's, that's a presumption of if this happened and this was annualized over twenty years at a three percent interest rate to pay for that portion. There could be some savings if you said it was just going to be a capital expenditure and it was going to be paid for, you know, out of a fund balance. But it's probably not substantial. It's probably in like the $5 range. So, you're probably still over $100, even if that's how we approached it. That's just a quick breakdown, at least for where, where the estimates have been and where we came from with the most recent one. And then, so the, the last concern that came up was the lack of upfront capital for the reimbursement programs. So, as I said earlier, the city offers two programs to help fund lateral repairs. And we have the sanitary sewer lateral pavement reimbursement program, which started in 2008. And as you saw on a kind of our history lesson, is it's transformed over time. It's been different, different variable costs that have been covered at different percentages, different maximums. But currently, where we're at with it today is it provides up to ninety-five percent of total sanitary lateral repair costs, based on the chart in the city code, which it's essentially, we pay, we pay a conservative unit cost for all pavement restoration aspects, inclusive of mobilization, for somebody to show up just to do the job. And then the other program that we offer currently is the emergency grant program. And it's been around since at least 1998. That's what we have records on it from. Unfortunately, it's, it's not used a bunch. It's run through our grants management division. I think we've had a total of three of these grants applied for and awarded in that timeframe. But this is the upfront cost option. It, it is income, you, you do have to qualify based on income. And if so, it provides upfront capital of up to $8,000 per project per year. So, just a little bit more depth on each of these. Again, the greatest cost is, is the pavement restoration and backfill and things like that. And currently, our program covers up to ninety-five percent of a total invoice for pavements, based on this chart. And I got some metrics on how much this has been used. So, the last four years, the, the city budget's about fifty, budget's $50,000 annually. That's what it's been for at least the last four or five years now. And on average, over the past four years, we've spent $47,800 per year on this, with an average reimbursement of approximately $5100 based on an average invoice of $8,500. So, homeowners are responsible for, on average, $3,400 of an $8,500 repair within this program. The emergency grant program, again, it does provide the upfront capital to repair health and safety issues, assist lower-income, single-family owner-occupied properties. This is the income eligibility chart, which kind of shows you, you know, where these things fall. So, household income of less than eighty percent of the MFI. And then based on the family size of the house, that, that varies. It's a sliding scale based on that, as you can see. So, this is just a better data of past utilization of city programs. We've had 101 sanitary lateral pavement reimbursements from 2008 to today. As you can see, probably not so well, and I can provide a much better map that you guys can zoom in on and, with a log of these. But, you know, it's kind of been utilized throughout the city. When we talk about Dr. Ellis, Dr. Ellis has only had one satire, sanitary lateral pavement reimbursement on Tremont Street, I believe. And then you can see, there's a couple of emergency repair programs that are up in that, up in that area. But those are much more sparse. So, for additional information on the reimbursement programs themselves, I provide some contact information in here for everybody. You can talk to me or Public Works in general and our right-of-way permit technician. Or for the emergency repair program, you talk to Sheila Dodd in Community Development to get that application started. So, just a summary of the, the findings of this. So, the sewer mains on private property, we found that all the sewer mains are located in the public right-of-way or a recorded easement that allows them to be there. The lack of equity, we do recognize that. It's, it's a real thing. There is a lack of equity in considerations for longer and shorter service laterals and pavement reimbursement, which that's how this, that's how and why the city has developed these two programs that they have currently. Private expense for the public infrastructure, or for infrastructure in the public right-of-way, we recognize this as a thing as well. However, it's not uncommon to many municipalities. Many municipalities operate this way. If we wanted to operate differently, there would be a, a need for rate increases, additional staffing, equipment, and some new challenges with division of responsibility and equity. Lack of upfront costs, the city's emergency repair program offers upfront capital provided individuals qualify based on their household income. And that's the end of my presentation. I know it was a lot, and I've got a lot of resources and things like that, but I'll supply with this, including the past correspondence and everything that kind of the history stuff came from, that everybody's welcome to dig through. And I welcome questions.
And you can share the PowerPoint with council?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Tim? Mary Alice?
Two points of clarification. So, I, I understand that the, the main sewer line, which can be located in three different locations, roughly speaking, is, is owned by the city unless it's owned by the sanitary district. And it is the connection from the house to that sewer line that is privately owned. So, back in 2019, it was estimated that it would be approximately $7 per household per month in order for the city to take over that responsibility of that lateral to the house. So, that's my question. Was that estimate from the sewer main to the actual hookup at the house? Or was it only from the public right-of-way sewer to the sewer main?
I believe it was from the public sewer to the public right-of-way, not to the house.
So, so, an individual would still be responsible from the connection of the public right-of-way all the way up to their house?
Correct.
But they would no longer have to pay for the pavement and so forth?
Correct.
Which is the big, big cost?
Correct.
Okay. So, my second question is now it's, it's approximately $9 per household per month every year, right? Does that include the personnel that it would take to do this? Does that include the, all of the equipment we would have to buy? So, that's, that's the total cost?
Yes, loosely, yes. That, we would definitely have to dig into this in much greater detail if that's the path we, that people want us to go. This is a high-level conceptual look right now. So, we would have to look at that, but generally, yes, I would say that that is in the ballpark.
Okay. I, I know a lot of other people have questions, so I just wanted to clarify those points.
Sure.
Thank you very much for putting all that together. I know it's a lot.
Sharice?
So, you're basically saying that for, regarding the reimbursement and, and that type of thing, it would be that's $10 basically per household throughout the City of Urbana?
Correct.
So, my other question is, if, how much, how much do you anticipate it would be instead of taking over the right-of-way, putting a cleanout, making cleanouts accessible?
At the right-of-way?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the estimate I had in there was, if we did sixty-eight percent of them, so people within the right-of-way, not the backyard areas, it was about $1,000 per cleanout of that, which was a total of, you know, let me go back to the slide, I'll give you the There we go. So, is about $45 per person, per year. That's annualizing that over a forty-five-year period. Or $1,000 per each cleanout. So, in one fell swoop, if we're doing...
So, my question is, is that less? Just break it down. Is that less than the other, the other thing that you're, the other thing that you're talking about?
Slightly. So, if you look at this slide right here, here at the bottom, under the little spreadsheet thing, so the portion that is really us taking over lifecycle operation and maintenance is that $63.40.
Mm-hmm.
And then installing the cleanouts is that $45. So, those two together make the, the nine or $10 per month. So, that's assuming we would install a cleanout at every property as kind of like a capital project. Or, or, or it would be strung out through a certain number of time as if and when there are issues, we install the cleanout at that time.
Okay. So, my question then is also this. Would you, instead of, I mean, this is something that can be, that could be done over time. And if it is done over time, would you still have to charge extra? Meaning, if there's something, if there is some kind of, of savings or whatever, I don't know how to put it, you know, just something put back already, would you be able to do that without any cost to the homeowner?
I mean, there's...
Considering it's probably something that should have been done a while back.
So, you're saying, could, could it be something that just gets implemented over time, like?
Right.
One person calls, they have an issue, we convert them over?
Well, not necessarily waiting until somebody's, you know, sewer explodes, sewer line exposed, but just installing that in a, in a timely fashion, just, you know, so many, so many at, at each quarter throughout, throughout whatever neighborhood, but in specifically Ellis subdivision.
I think the cost is going to be the same regardless over the long term. Just how that rolls out would be differently. It would be more incremental increases, where if we said that we were going to convert the whole system over a ten-year period, and really wish I had that total number right now. But I'm going to say, I'm going to say it's about, well, that total number was 715,000. So, it's about $500,000, we're going to say, to install over the whole city. If we said we're going to spend $50,000 a year, so that would be the incremental increase per year. If we said we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars a year, so that would be the incremental increase per year to convert the whole city over ten percent of the time.
And I have one more question and then I'm going, were you able to find any, because I know I asked you to do this earlier, any plans, anything at all? Regarding the building of Ellis subdivision?
I've got some speci-
One, two, and three.
Yeah, I've got some specifications and some plan sheets, but there's not a whole lot of detail. I mean, for me, it provides me detail from an engineering perspective of, I know what the slopes of the sewers are. I know that, you know, what the size of these sewers are, what they're made of, things like that. But it doesn't provide, we don't have like review notes or anything from the time that would have said, oh, you know, we think you need to make the sewer one percent instead of point four percent. But we've got something like that, that we've found.
You don't think that's kind of important though, that, I mean, it's hard to try to reconcile something if there's no history of it?
I feel you there. I'm the same way, that's what I've been trying to work through. And that's, that's what we've been trying to do, but what we have, it's, it's because we weren't doing formal reviews like we do them today. And it was outside of the city limits when it happened. So we have very rough documentation of this stuff, but we don't...
Wait, Urbana was, Ellis subdivision was outside city limits at the time?
Yes. It was in the one and a half mile EJ, EJT. So they were privy to ask the city to provide comments, but it was not like a formal subdivision development review that would happen today where we review the plaits and approve those, and then, you know, they are either annexed or the annexation agreements are created and then construction happens, and then we sign off on the construction and all that stuff.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's what this first area here, so I had our surveyor basically do digging to understand, you know, when these approvals happen versus when the, the properties were formally annexed. And as you can see, we had review documentation, and then we had annexation, and construction happened in between those times, but we don't know the exact timeframe or logistics of that. Because we weren't overseeing it per se.
And so now it's our problem. Okay.
Thank you. Grace?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation and looking into all of this. I appreciate the background work that's been done in this. So if I could clarify then, it sounds like you're saying from these findings that there's not necessarily a unique issue in the Dr. Ellis subdivision that doesn't exist, other parts of Urbana, is that correct?
Correct.
And is, is there anything else that I'm missing here, like with the clean-outs or possibly the grade? Because it seems like people are reporting issues specifically from this area. So do you think like there is something we haven't figured out yet, or do you know what that is? Or is that the case, or it's just a problem widespread?
Well, and, and this is highly speculative, but we do, we do have issues like this throughout the city. We, in Public Works, we hear about them very frequently. We may not track them because if we get a call and it's a private sewer lateral, we're not, we're not responding to that per se. We're going to check to make sure our lines are clear, and if our lines are clear, then it's a private issue. But we get calls about that stuff all the time in regards to that. And, you know, everywhere, including some of our newest subdivisions are built this exact same way, where we have sanitary sewers on one side of the street and laterals that cross the entire street. And it's certainly inconvenient, you know, I think that's, that's, you know, I certainly understand that and I think the city is trying to do something, you know. Potentially, it's talking, you know, looking at our program and seeing if it's, if it still fits the mold or not, or if we need to look or adjust that thing to try to address these.
And saying our program as far as the current funding or the engineering perspective of repairs or?
The reimbursement program is what I was referring to.
Okay, which is currently the emergency grant program, but that's not very heavily used. And then the reimbursement program after the fact?
Correct.
And that, so you're saying in the other figure, the seven hundred and fifteen thousand per year total would be for the city assuming responsibility of the sewer main and laterals in the public right-of-way?
Correct.
Plus that forty-five per household that we said is maybe about five hundred thousand for new clean-outs, which is the little, I had to Google that, a little like extra line to clean and suction stuff out of there, right?
Yes.
And that, so that would be a one-time cost?
That would be, yes, that would essentially be a one-time cost. So the forty-five dollars is essentially annualized over twenty years. And the site, doing that really, it kind of projects forward twenty years from now, saying in twenty years, if we're continuing to, if we had this baseline level of service, we were doing just inflation, we should be keeping up with that baseline level of service. So potentially at twenty years, it's not that that would drop off, you know, feasibly. You would just be there because that's the cost of doing business at that time from inflation, but yes, it, it could also be considered a one-time expense where it was, we're going to invest this one-time capital cost of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and so you're saying that some of the biggest costs for the repairs, or some of, no, wait, back up. The reason for the issues with people's sewers, you're saying is not necessarily the design of the setup and the laterals and where the main is placed, more just regular...
It's not evidence of that. I mean, lots of people have issues with laterals and some of the biggest issues with laterals are tree roots. And you see that everywhere. And depending on, you know, I mean, some of our new subdivisions still have clay sewers in them. You know, twenty years ago, we were still putting clay in the ground. And clay is a little bit more subjective to root intrusion, just because the joints between the pipes aren't as good as what the new stuff is now, where we have glastomeric seals between the pipes and all this stuff that prevent that happening. It's less common for it to happen. It's not that it doesn't happen because PVC pipe, it gets brittle, it cracks. All it needs is a crack in any pipe or a hole in any pipe, and roots are going to dig and try to find the water source that's present in sewers.
So you're saying that the issue is not necessarily the design, but the design comes into play for the cost, right? That if someone has to repair their lateral across the sidewalk or across the street and into the right-of-way on the other side of the street is where the design plays in with the extra cost associated?
Right. I mean, so in a situation, if you were going to build a sewer down the main road, we as a whole, as a city, would pay more money for that because we are taking care of the pavement and all that stuff. So now, anytime we have to dig up one of our mains in the street, the cost that a homeowner that has to replace pavement sees, we see as public as a whole. So any, any piece of infrastructure that's under pavement just inherently costs more. So whether that's publicly owned or privately owned, you know, that's, that's going to be a cost regardless.
And then last one, if I could clarify, currently, the city is responsible for the sewer main regardless of location, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so it's just the lateral that currently the resident is responsible for completely, regardless of location, on the right-of-way? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Thanks for the presentation, Tim. Do we have a count of the number of residences in the Dr. Ellis subdivision that have complained to you about problems with their sewage backup?
Me personally?
Well, there is a count.
You probably shouldn't ask that, I've only been here a year and a half. But to me, I, you know, I've heard from probably two or three people in the year and a half I've been here. Prior to that, I'd have to look into that to see what we've got, but I don't know that number. I think there's probably approximately a hundred and twenty-five-ish properties in all of Dr. Ellis. So, so we could look and we could see if we've got a historical count of, you know, how many have had issues. Again, I don't, depending on what was found, so usually, and until just a few years ago, we may not have good records on that kind of stuff anyways. But usually, if someone calls in and they've got a lateral issue, what we'll do is we'll go check our sewer main line and make sure that we don't have a surcharge in our main line that is now causing a problem upstream for them. If we open that and we have no issues with ours thing, we call them back and say, this is in the private lateral, our sewer line is clear. So there may not be definitive documentation of those reports if someone was just popping a manhole and looking in it and saying, we're not surcharged.
Let's get new people first. Anyone who hasn't asked a question, have a question? Okay, Sharice?
Yeah, Chris, I just kind of want to, and see, the thing is, is that the Dr. Ellis subdivision has, has, is sixty years old now. And so these issues may not all come up at once, but they will be coming because of how old and the, the age of, of what the requirements were when that, when that subdivision was built. And you know, some people are already starting to have, some people have already started having those kind of issues. However, just because not everyone has had it doesn't mean it's not something that's yet to come. So what we're trying to do is prophylactic because of the fact that our subdivision is not like where other subdivisions have the same problem. We don't have concrete streets. We've got asphalt street, which is really harder to dig up and it's, it's going to be more, more junk. Also, and then you have to have that replaced. And you're asking your, the, the resident of the, of the area to be the person to possibly have to go to another resident and say, I gotta tear up your sidewalk. And then we've got to also find, and make sure that we have someone that has the materials or has the, the know, the, the knowledge. All that on our own. And I don't know about anyone else, but I'm not an engineer, and I don't know, just because somebody might tell me that, yeah, we can do it, or whatever, doesn't mean that they actually can or that they're actually doing it correctly. And of course, the city would come in, inspect it and see if it was okay. And if it's not, then what? If I get, you know, Joe Blow hustle does, you know, says he can do it, but he's, but he does it incorrectly, what happens then? I have to pay twice? You know?
Well, the, the one-
It becomes an issue, that's all I'm saying.
The one joy, and I'm not going to say joy because there's not a lot of joy because it costs more money to build in the right-of-way, but work within the right-of-way, through our right-of-way permit program, every bit of that work is inspected by our right-of-way technicians. So if you're coming and making new connections to the main and putting new sewer lateral and backfilling-
See, but I won't be doing that, whoever I hire will be doing that.
No, we will be doing that.
Well then...
Our public works technician comes out and inspects. So if they dig up the main and they look at this stuff, are, they have a right, that, whoever you hire has to go pull a right-of-way permit from Public Works to do the work. So we know they're doing it. And then we can come out and when they're doing the work, we try to do intermediate inspections to come and say, okay, it looks like you've put all the pipe back together the way it's supposed to be. You got a backfill, okay, that looks good. Okay, now you got to do your pavement, and we have to check all those boxes as they go through that.
And I guess my point is, you know, having, having to have to do that anyway, why can't, why can't it not be some kind of compromise, instead of having me have to, you know, find that person and, and vet that person, whoever that person is that's going to be fixing that? Why is it that the city is not capable of doing that?
We could certainly-
Or somebody at the city, an inspector? There's not even a list online or anything like that that could recommend people, that, you know, these are who we recommend if, in the cases happens. It says, look them up in Yellow Pages. And that, that doesn't, I don't know, that just never boded well with me reading that.
And, and I think, you know, to a degree, we could look into doing something like that, where the city essentially issues some kind of request for qualifications that we qualify these people, but we also have to be worried about then, you know, essentially not qualifying people that are capable, but they're just not on our list. You know, and that's, that's going to be a challenge with any procurement. So if we have a pre-qualification list, you know, that also probably needs to be reviewed pretty regularly, you know, maybe annually or biannually, to try to keep that available. And, you know, from a city standpoint, we, we generally are not going to recommend contractors to people because it gets into an issue of, you know, favoring one versus the other.
Well, that's the very time to me when you actually need somebody that's recommended by the city. Because myself, I'm, I don't, I wouldn't know anything about, even where to start with that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I'm just, you're asking, you're asking a citizen to, to become an expert on some level of regarding all of these things. And when someone is up in age, because most of the people, a lot of the people that the demographic of Ellis subdivision, those people own their homes, from my mother on down. They own their homes. They are not in a position usually to be able to do all that research. All you want is somebody to come and fix the sewer. And so it's a lot of responsibility to put on a particular demographic of people.
Could you take the chair, Sharice?
I would certainly take the chair, Mayor Marlin.
Just to clarify, you said that over, from two thousand eight to twenty twenty-two, there were a hundred and one reimbursements. So by my math, that's about seven times a year, six to seven times this happens. So it's a relatively rare occurrence in the city of Urbana. And I know based on our past discussions from over the years, one of the challenges has been not so much just the cost of the repair, but the fact that the property owner has to pay the contractor and then be reimbursed for it. And in the past, that was, that was an issue for folks. The explanation given in the past is that the city can't directly pay the contractor because of prevailing wage. That would mean the homeowner would then be paying prevailing wages, isn't, which isn't what typically local contractors charge. So it seems like, to me, and it always has seemed this way, that, that that is a challenge that we haven't addressed yet, and I'm not sure if there is a way to do it. But it's not so much the fact that a few people relatively each year have a lateral that goes under public right-of-way that involves tearing up sidewalks or streets, but the fact that, that very large upfront cost, which may be for, you know, just a few weeks, is, is a barrier. So that seems to me something that we could be looking at again to see if there's another way to address that. I know there's the emergency grant program, but that's income-based. But that upfront, we, we pay almost the entire cost of the, the public infrastructure repair, which is the most generous, one of the most generous reimbursement programs in, of all the cities that were surveyed, probably in the entire state. It's a question of the upfront reimbursement, or the, after-the-fact reimbursement, so.
Yeah, just, just to speak on that, my past history with other municipalities, that is always the challenge. The city takes it over, we have prevailing wage requirements that drives the cost up ultimately.
Yeah, so we have a very generous reimbursement program. It just requires an upfront payment and people to wait until they get paid back by the city, which we're good for. It's just a question of how to do it.
I've seen them structured different ways for different things in different towns. You know, I've seen them try to do, you know, essentially material reimbursements because you avoid the prevailing wage requirements then, but generally speaking, the labor is the expensive portion, so.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's a challenge we can, we can look at. I'll take the chair back.
Okay, you have the chair, Mayor.
Questions, James and then Jay.
Yeah, I'm wondering with the issue of having to do it and then get reimbursed, if we could look into an escrow model where we, we put the, the money for it in trust so that it can be dispersed by the homeowner and avoid the prevailing wage issue? Working with a, with a local bank or some model that would get around that, still have the disbursement controlled by the homeowner, but have it be from a, from an account that was funded by the city? I have no idea if that's possible, just a thought.
And does, Sheila, do you know what the income requirements are?
He had them up there earlier. For a single-family, it's like forty-nine thousand a year.
Yeah.
And there you go.
For one person? Okay, great. Jay?
I apologize if I missed this, but do you have an estimate of like, on average, how much, much this kind of repair would cost someone?
Yeah, so the last, at least from the ones that we have reimbursements for, over the last four years, they've been on average about eighty-five hundred dollars per repair. So that's in right-of-way pavement-type repairs. And we've reimbursed about fifty-one, fifty-one hundred per, portion of that. More generally speaking, usually if you're getting into the pavement, you're probably in the, I'm going to say seven to ten thousand dollar range, depending on how much pavement you're really getting into. And if you're within the right-of-way, you're probably more in the three to five thousand dollar range.
And so if someone was income eligible, would they also be eligible for the reimbursement for whatever wasn't covered? And so if someone was income-eligible, would they also be eligible for the reimbursement for whatever wasn't covered?
My understanding is the way it's set up, that's not how it's, you're eligible for one, but not necessarily both.
Okay, that's helpful clarification. And then just to go back to your point about checking on the work, if it's in the right of way, is there like a process for stopping it, right? I think that's an important point of clarification too. So if, you know, public works staff come out and they're like, whoa, no, this isn't right, I assume there's a mechanism to require that contractor to fix it properly?
Yeah, well, typically, so the kind of the benchmarks or milestones they'll say in a sewer repair is you're going to excavate, you're going to see what's there, assess what, how much you have to replace, or what you have to do. You know, in some cases, it's, you know, and the one on Tremont, we got down to replace our main and ended up having to replace parts of multiple laterals because of the, how close they were together and the excavation that was needed for the repair. But yeah, typically, so someone's gonna go, they're gonna excavate, they're gonna look at this, they're gonna say, okay, that's what we're gonna do. They remove everything, they put their new stuff back in. At that time, our right-of-way inspector should be inspecting the pipe as laid to say, okay, the connection here is good, it's good here, you can now backfill it. Once they backfill, then they have to do form inspections and things like that for patching.
Mary Alice?
So in terms of the reimbursement, I'm trying to figure out a way to make this a bit easier on the residents. Does the resident have to actually, so they get a bill and then they submit the bill to the city? Does the resident have to pay that bill physically before the city will reimburse them the amount?
I believe that's the way it's written, is they have to send a copy of the paid invoice.
Because a couple of things, I mean, the first one, I know, when we had this conversation back in 2017, I know one of the items was, well, you know, somebody could think that it's approved under this program, but it's not. So I'm wondering if the city could, if there's something that happens, go out and kind of pre-approve. Look at the assessment and say, all right, it's not in the sewer main that we're responsible for. Your sewer main is on this side and you're totally on the other side. So you would be eligible if you have to replace some of that and you have to dig up, you know what I mean? So that you had some of that better guarantee and then you can show your contractor?
Right.
And then, you know, I know that we can't, it sounds to me like we can't directly pay the contractor because of prevailing wage issues. But if there was another way in which they wouldn't have to pay that piece, but we could pay the individual to pay, I don't know. That whole payment structure and then in terms of coming up with eight grand, I think is the big problem, right? So the big problem is it costs way more money if you live across the street from the sewer main and you have to come up with that money upfront. So that's the little piece that I think if we can solve that piece, I think it'll make it a lot easier.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, thinking about that, you know, it's hard to ask a business owner. I mean, quite frankly, the contractors that do a lot of work here in Urbana, they know about this program. They know, they tell the people that call them about this program because it incentivizes people to do repairs, you know, maybe do more than what they're going to do because they're like, oh man, I don't wanna do, I wanna do as little as possible. And now they're like, now I wanna do it right because we have a funding source that's gonna help us with this. So all the contractors know about it. You know, if we could, you know, somehow discuss something or if, you know, an individual could work with a contractor and say to the contractor, you know, as part of our agreement, I'm not paying you until, you know, or, yeah, I don't know how that works. That's a challenge because, you know, you would like to, well, you know, there are options out there, you know, depending on what's available. But, you know, there are other financing options out there where, you know, if you had to get some kind of short-term loan on it, you would pay a marginal amount of interest, provided you were getting reimbursed in the next thirty, sixty days.
So the other piece, just to talk a little bit to what Charisse was talking about, which will, how the heck do you find somebody who's legit? I myself have had to replace a clay sewer lateral. And I've had friends who have had to replace it and gotten widely different ranges of cost, from five thousand to a thousand, to eight thousand dollars for the same thing. So I really like your idea of doing a request for qualifications. I understand that the city can't recommend somebody, but I do think one of the things that we could do is saying, these people meet these qualifications. Or, you know, we have reimbursed, we have done reimbursements of some kind. So that it gives the resident a little bit more confidence that the person is certified to work in the city of Urbana. It doesn't, it's not a recommendation, it's just that these are the people who filled this out and-
Right.
I think that that could also be of assistance to anybody in Urbana.
Yeah, and I think, you know, maybe something for that would be to just review, you know, the last however many years of, you know, sewer contracts that have pulled permits and just, these people have done sewer work in Urbana, they've been permitted to do it. At someone, you know, I'm not saying that this one did a hundred and this one did one, but, you know, it's just a list at that point. And it's not, there's no recommendation, there's no other ties to it.
Charisse?
And that's what I was gonna also say, Mary Alice, is that it's the not having the expertise and having to pay upfront. And that's an issue. And there are other issues, and I'm hoping that this can be a continuing discussion. There's some other issues that I think that, you know, you didn't necessarily find, but some stuff that I've found. And we're not gonna be able to talk about that tonight because this is your, this is your party. So, but I just felt like, I feel that one of the things regarding, the other problem with the reimbursement, one of those reimbursement, I don't know if it's both of them, is that you are required to fill out a W-9. So it basically makes you a subcontract laborer. So when you get reimbursed, you're gonna be taxed on it, I think. I think that may also be an issue, I don't know. But I do know that with one of those applications comes a W-9 or something like that.
Yeah, I believe that the reason for that is that's essentially, you know, I don't know that it's truly treated as income, but it's related, it needs to be related to your taxes.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a public benefit, I'll say, I guess.
Yeah.
Finance, finance could probably shed some light on that, but I'm sure it's something along those lines of, you know, you're getting some recognized benefit.
And I don't know if that goes to the person that we may happen to hire for them to fill it out or if it actually is the applicant that has to fill it out.
It's the applicant.
So yeah, that kinda, that's kinda not nice either. It makes it an issue if, in the sense that I have to claim that as income, I have to claim that reimbursement as income having already paid out hopefully that money. And then I turn around and claim it as income, only now I might have to pay taxes on it. So that kinda sucks.
We can verify that. Any other questions? Grace?
Yes, or discussion, since this is a discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if you were saying questions specifically. I appreciate the input again from staff and members of the public and other council members. I think that, you know, I definitely agree with making this process more accessible and a little more streamlined, having the city, however much we can, help navigate this really complicated process. That sounds like it's definitely a big daunting task to select someone and go through all of these things. So I think any support that we can provide to residents is great, especially with connecting them to the other programs and resources because it seems like that might be one piece of the issue is that it's really not very well utilized. Because in your map, is it correct too that the reimbursement, only one of them was in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, I think that, you know, a hundred reimbursements in that time, you know, is what it is, but also keeping in mind that only one of those was in the Dr. Ellis neighborhood. And it seems like none of them with the grant program. So it seems like we could better maybe publicize or make it easier to use the existing programs and then also see how we could improve them or maybe add new ones. So I'm definitely in support of making this a more accessible and convenient process for the public and definitely down for having more discussions about this complicated issue.
Any other comments? Jaya?
Yeah, kind of to that point, I almost feel like it would be helpful to have some sort of almost public checklist of like, here are the steps so that if people are exploring their options, that they're aware, for one thing, that that grant exists, right? I think that, you know, as a homeowner, you know, who also, there are lots of people in my neighborhood who have the same problems with the clay pipes and would be eligible for that grant. I don't know of anyone in my neighborhood who's aware of that program, just in talking to people who've had to have their pipes replaced. So I think, you know, certainly for Dr. Ellis, but also just more broadly, making sure people know, like, what resources are available to them. And I see you're going to the website.
We had, we had a brochure.
I will say, like, I, even as a council member, find our website really confusing.
I use Google.
So I think like, you know, if we can, you know, we're recognizing that this is an issue that's been coming up for years, right? And so, you know, yeah, maybe it does mean doing a brochure again too, right? Even if we've done, you know, publications or, you know, raised awareness in the community before, just trying to really clearly lay it out to folks of like, if you have these issues, here are the steps that you can take, right? From, you know, contacting a contractor, need help finding information about a contractor, here's where you go. You know, making sure people know that if they're using the reimbursement program, that they're gonna get taxed on it. So I think that just kind of, some of this, I think, can be fixed just with more information that's clearly organized. And I also, I do wanna thank you for laying it all out there, right? Like, there is a lot of information, even with receiving input from the public that I hadn't seen or heard before. So I think anything that we can do to try to make sure that people have access to the programs that already exist and they know how to use them and what the implications might be, I think that's something that's a very straightforward, should be a very straightforward process that would make a big difference.
Chris?
Yeah, thanks again for the presentation and the explanations, Tim. Unfortunately, this meeting, the format of this meeting is unfortunate because I am sure that those listening to us talk would like to respond to the presentation. So I would support what Alder Person Wilkins says, that we continue this conversation in some kind of way, allowing for their input. I wanna remind the audience that you can contact us by email, you can contact us by phone, and you can certainly come next meeting and give your public input, verbal public input. I think the big hurdle is gonna be, you know, people just can't afford this upfront cost. And what James was talking about, an escrow account or something like, you know, some kind of city financing to, you know, the homeowners would be very important. So I hope we can explore this kind of stuff in the future.
Any last comments? We do have other items.
One last thing I wanted to say, because when you were talking about escrow, when I talked to Tim about this, I think the way I put it was like a verf for sanitary. If there's, is there any way that we can, we can get something going so that what we have is that if the city themselves is not gonna necessarily pay for it, and instead of having this reimbursement thing, maybe that's the workaround, is that you kind of have some kind of, some kind of putback, some kind of something that would help the citizen, if you're gonna make them become an engineer, that it would help them in the sense that you just basically go, this is what the cost is, here you go. And the city, you know, maybe they write out the check to you, maybe they write it out to whoever does the work. But I don't know, just, I didn't know any other way of putting it except verf because that's the new, that's the new, fun new term I've learned about saving money to replace equipment. So I was just hoping that maybe there would be something to that effect regarding the sanitary issue. But anyway, like I said, I would like to have this continue and, yes, so that you can hear, you can hear everything. Because this is really the first time that the entire council, I think, is hearing one side or the other in the history and so on and so forth on that, on this kind of level. So I would like to, I would like to also continue this discussion at another meeting.
Thank you. Well, we have some questions that we do need to answer. And after, I have to say, after thirteen years of hearing about this topic, I learned some new things tonight as well. So I wanna thank you for the very detailed history there. And we will get some answers. And the other thing I wanna remind folks is, as you saw during the presentation, about one-third of all the properties in Urbana would not qualify for any of these programs because the laterals are located entirely on private property. If your sewer main goes through your backyard or your side yard, your lateral is all on your property and that means any expense related to your lateral is your expense. And somebody with a big yard or a long lateral is going to have considerable expense. So you try to address an inequity in sewer placements for two-thirds of the population and you've got one-third of the population, you're still got an inequity there. I mean, that's, it's never a perfect world, but that's a reality here in Urbana. And I wish the entire city had been built the same way and our life would be way simpler, but it wasn't. And it was developed at different times. And as you saw tonight, it was developed before, some of these subdivisions were developed before they were even annexed into the city. So the city had no control over what happened. But we're doing our best and we'll try to address the questions that came up tonight and see what we can come up with. Thank you. And we will mail out, email the presentation to council members and it'll be available on the city's website.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to new business. And that's ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-two-two-zero-five-zero-one-eight, which is an ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance for solar energy system text amendment, Plan Case 2425-T21. Marcus Reche, City Planner.
Good evening, Council. The proposed amendment would add Section 13-9 Solar Energy Systems and make minor changes to Articles 2, 5, and 6 to the Urbana zoning ordinance. And the requested changes will more accurately reflect the nature of solar energy systems and their operation and would regulate them based on their construction and location. Currently, the ordinance treats solar panels as a mechanical system with differing development regulations for non-residential and residential structures such as screening requirements and height restrictions. These regulations treat solar systems differently than other structures, can be overly restrictive and have discouraged development of solar energy systems. The Urbana Plan Commission held a public hearing on the proposed text amendment at its April 21st meeting and voted unanimously to recommend that city council approve the text amendment as presented and staff concur with that recommendation. The city of Urbana has long expressed an interest in promoting renewable energy sources such as wind and solar, including it as an objective in its 2005 comprehensive plan and incorporating it into its climate inheritance resolution and its climate action plan. Urbana's Sustainability and Resiliency Officer Scott Test worked with the Great Plains Institute in 2015 to evaluate whether the city's regulations facilitated or inhibited development of solar energy systems. Their response letter was in Exhibit A. Our current regulations have required planning staff to handle proposed solar energy systems in less-than-optimal ways, such as treating principal solar systems as an electrical substation. This is fairly standard in municipalities that don't have a standalone solar energy system zoning amendment. They treat it as an electrical substation or a utility station. The zoning ordinance does not regulate small or accessory solar systems very well either, requiring staff to treat all systems as a mechanical system rather than as an accessory structure, sometimes requiring costly mitigation measures such as screening a solar system from the view of persons driving or walking by. Developers have also asked why solar arrays were required to be screened from view, but large accessory structures like a pole barn require no screening. The current planning and zoning best practice is to treat all, to treat small solar arrays as accessory structures rather than as a mechanical systems and regulate them like any other accessory structure in that zoning- any other accessory structure in that zoning district, including the American Planning Association, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, and the Midwest Renewable Energy Associations. And there were some exhibits included detailing some of their recommendations. The current case started as Plan Case Twenty-three Fifty-nine T Eighteen, and the Urbana Plan Commission held a public hearing on that case in two thousand and nineteen. Planning staff brought the issue to a follow-up study session of the Plan Commission in two thousand and twenty-one. Staff also, so discussed the issue with the Sustainability Advisory Commission, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, and incorporated their comments into the research and draft language. Based on those discussions and our research, staff proposed the following approach: adding a new Section thirteen-nine to the zoning ordinance to regulate solar energy systems. This is similar to the wind energy system section in the zoning ordinance. Also, to make minor changes to Articles Two, Five, and Six, adding definitions to distinguish between principal use and accessory use solar energy systems, to, uh, apply the new regulations to ground-mounted systems only, because building-mounted systems would be exempt from the new regulations and would be, continue to be regulated as mechanical systems. We would permit solar farms by right in the agricultural zoning district and as a special use in R four through R seven, uh, residential districts, all business districts, and all industrial districts, and the CRE district. And to permit solar arrays as, uh, accessory structures in all zoning districts. And finally, um, building-mounted solar energy systems that comply with building code and other zoning regulations would not be further regulated, um, as they do not contribute to an increased footprint, mass, or significant height of a structure. Ground-mounted systems would be regulated by the amendment. In practice, the zoning administrator would review a proposed solar energy system and determine whether or not it meets the definition of accessory use as it's already defined in the zoning ordinance, and whether it met all criteria for accessory uses that is already required by Section five-two of the zoning ordinance. Solar farms and solar arrays should be allowed where they will not create a nuisance to neighboring districts or uses. Staff and Plan Commission agreed that the ag, agricultural zoning district is the zoning district least likely to present land use incompatibilities with internal or neighboring uses, as well as a combination of, um, not having spent large sums of money to build infrastructure that would be, uh, required for industrial uses, say in the IN-one or IN-two zoning districts. Exhibit C shows in green where, um, the ag districts are located, and the blue areas are all of the other districts where it would be permitted as a special use that would require review by Plan Commission and agreement, a vote, um, by city council to approve it upon site plan review, and any required, uh, conditions that city council might deem necessary to put on them. A little closer up, uh, the northern chunk shows the large green area is the Urbana landfill. Part of that is zoned agricultural. The east half, uh, that's currently the site of the large-scale solar array that was permitted with a special use permit, I believe, two years ago. That western portion, uh, that's in blue, that is zoned conservation, recreation, education. That currently would not be allowed to have a solar farm on it. It would need to be rezoned to a district that would allow a electrical substation if we were going to continue regulating solar farms as the most similar use, an electrical substation, which is, you know, a, a, um, a dance that we have to do because there is no explicit use solar farm in the table of uses in the zoning ordinance. They would have to rezone it to something that would allow us to say, yes, we're going to allow an electrical substation there. Under the proposed zoning amendment, it could stay zoned conservation, recreation, education, which would allow it to also be used for conservation uses, environmental uses, and they would apply for a special use permit, which would get reviewed by Plan Commission and, um, voted on by city council. Uh, the land, the green blob to the west, that is East Lawn Cemetery, along Cunningham Avenue, that is currently zoned agricultural. We don't have a specific zoning district for cemeteries. In the southern half, oh, and the east, to the east, these are six house lots along, I think, um, Main Street, I believe, uh, that are zoned agricultural. They're, you know, relics of houses that are single-family houses on large lots that were annexed into the city, uh, and they are currently zoned agricultural. The southern half of the screen shows, uh, this large parcel here, this is the Berkey Agricultural Implement Property. It's currently zoned agricultural. And then, uh, this triangle here is, um, an electrical substation property. I believe there is a little bit, I'm not sure what's on the balance of the property, but it's currently zoned agricultural. And then across the street from it is a veterinary medical facility that is currently zoned agricultural. Now, these are agriculturally zoned properties that, under the proposed amendment, could have a solar farm, principal use solar farm sighted on it. But practically speaking, you're looking at a minimum of five or six acres at least, more likely ten, to put on a, a functioning, economically viable solar farm that would, you know, probably only allow, uh, the rear half of Berkeys and the landfill, um, as potential properties that could, uh, hold a, a solar farm on it. Now, you could apply for a special use permit to say, okay, I want to do a large-scale solar array at the landfill and have part of it be on the blue area, the CRE zoned area. So you could aggregate parcels as long as you applied for the necessary special use permit, if you liked. Okay. Uh, the special use, speaking of which, the special use permit review process under the proposed zoning amendment would require the applicant to submit a site plan showing the location of inverters, solar panels, access drives to the property, grid interconnections to the utility system, and any other information required by the zoning administrator. As written, inverters for solar farms would be required to be located at least a hundred and fifty feet from all property lines. So when you add on that requirement, that effectively excludes the vet facility, the six house lots, because you don't have three-hundred-foot buffer distance to put the inverters on the site. So a little bit of additional, uh, protection for smaller lots. That also would, uh, get rid of a lot of the residential and smaller lot areas throughout the city because you aren't going to be able to aggregate a parcel that is at least three-hundred by three-hundred, um, to put on a, a solar farm. Solar farms would also have to comply with applicable state and local regulations, including the Urbana Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixteen, noise and vibrations, to address the concern about inverters, um, you know, causing a nuisance to neighbors. Solar arrays, ground-mounted solar arrays, would be a permitted use in all zoning districts as an accessory structure to a principal use, like a house or a business, and must meet the development regulations for accessory structures in the district in which it is located. And then we start getting into the actual language of, of the zoning ordinance. Again, this is shown in the standard. Underline is new language. Strikeout is getting rid of old language, um, that you're probably familiar with by now, after the R-seven amendment. So, um, the, the change in Section Two is simply adding solar energy systems to this statement that directs people to look at Article thirteen for things like setbacks and districts. In doing this amendment, we noted that wind energy systems had not been added as a cross-reference, so we would add in wind energy systems to direct people to Article thirteen. So that's just a little cleanup. The change in, in Section Five is simply adding solar farm to the table of uses. You can see, uh, we are treating it, listing it with other industrial uses. It's producing electricity. There's mechanical things involved. There's noise. And so the only district that it's permitted in by right is the ag district and the higher residential, which corresponds to residential districts that allow multifamily residential. So this is not putting a solar farm in a single or two-family district. The B-one, all of the business districts, um, the campus commercial district, uh, the CRE district, and the industrial districts would all be special uses. They would all require review by Plan Commission, who could put conditions on it, uh, who would then give a recommendation to city council. City council would review their, um, recommendation and their conditions, modify them, and then be the final vote on it. The change in Section six-five, there is a subsection in there that currently requires, uh, ground-mounted solar panels, allows short ground-mounted solar panels in residential districts to encroach into required yards. So if you have a skinny side yard, it allows you to come up to eighteen inches of your property line, similar to a garage, which is allowed to happen in, uh, as another accessory structure. By treating solar panels as an accessory structure, we no longer need this section in the zoning ordinance. It's redundant. So it, we are proposing it would be struck, and then we would renumber the remaining two items to fill up those numbers. The change in Section six-six is simply adding a footnote, um, after the first sentence. This is one of the problematic statements in the zoning ordinance right now. Ground-mounted mechanical equipment for all non-residential uses shall be screened from view at ground level from public rights-of-way and adjacent residential districts. This then directs a reader to Article thirteen-nine to see where solar arrays are going to be treated. They aren't treated as a mechanical if it's ground-mounted and a solar farm. It's treated separately. Uh, so this is simply directing people to the appropriate part of the zoning ordinance. And then we actually then get into the new section. There's a purpose statement, definitions, similar to the other sections in the special development provisions. We are relying on, at the recommendation of Plan Commission, the existing definitions of principal use and accessory use in the zoning ordinance, as opposed to creating new definitions of how we would define a principal use solar array or an accessory use solar array. We're relying on the expertise of the zoning administrator to be able to tell a principal use array from an accessory use array. Applicability, it only applies to new solar energy systems. We don't retroactively, you know, um, regulate. Permits required, this is, um, a very basic statement saying you have to get all your permits. It kind of goes without saying, but we want to let people know that you're responsible for getting your electrical permit, your solar connection permit, any permit that EPA might require. Section E, this says that the zoning administrator shall determine if it's a solar farm or a solar array. They refer back to the existing criteria for, um, accessory uses. We're not creating new criteria. We are truly trying to treat them as we treat other accessory uses and structures. Building-mounted solar energy systems, um, if it's mounted on the roof or if it's mounted on the wall, uh, it's not creating an additional impact to the neighbors, so we are exempting it from the rest of the solar energy system regulations. Other building code regulations all still apply. That, again, was at the, the recommendation of Plan Commission, as well as industry standards. If it's on the roof, it's not creating an additional impact. Ground-mounted solar arrays, two types, solar farms, large-scale, and solar arrays, small-scale. Solar farms permitted in the ag district, permitted as a special use in the following zoning districts, higher-intensity residential, all business districts, all industrial districts, and the CRE, Conservation, Recreation, Education zoning districts. Tells you what you need to submit on your site plan, and tells you that you, your inverters have to be at least a hundred and fifty feet from property lines. If you own multiple parcels, we look at it as a zoning lot like any other large-scale use. You can ignore the interior line, and then you have to be a hundred and fifty feet from all of the perimeter property lines. Solar farms that are located within five-hundred feet of an existing residential use must provide a landscape buffer, meeting the existing requirements for landscape buffers that are already in the zoning ordinance for other similar uses. Existing landscaping may satisfy this requirement, subject to approval by the zoning administrator. This tries to treat it similarly to outdoor storage facilities that require landscape buffers. So we are, again, trying to treat everybody equitably, use-wise. Let's see. Again, solar farms must comply with applicable state and local regulations. And then getting into the smaller-sized units, the solar arrays, these are the ones, you know, roof-mounted solar arrays for your house. If you are Riggs Beer Company and you want a ground-mounted solar array, this would be that. Solar arrays must meet all the criteria for accessory structures. That's like, it's customary and incidental to the principal use that's happening there on the property. And it must comply with all other sections of this ordinance governing accessory structures. Accessory structures sometimes need a smaller setback from the property line. If your garage is allowed to encroach up to eighteen inches to a property line, your, your solar array would allow to, be allowed to encroach up to eighteen inches from your property line. Solar arrays are excluded from gross-floor area calculations because they're not living space. We already exempt other accessory structures from being included in gross-floor area calculations. And in some instances, if your solar array is high enough up, think a solar pergola, uh, it could also be considered open space if it meets the following criteria. These are the same criteria that we use as open space calculations for things like balconies. If your balcony is high enough and you can have a picnic underneath it, if your solar array is that same height and you can have a picnic under it, you're still allowed to consider it as open space. And then finally, solar arrays located in a residential district must be located behind the front face of the principal structure. So you can't have a, you cannot have a, a solar array in your front yard in a residential district. Now, again, like many things, you can apply for a variance. This would be considered a major variance. It would go to Plan, um, Zoning Board of Appeals, and then to city council. Uh, this is a summary table showing building-mounted solar arrays and solar farms, what districts they're permitted in, what districts they're a special use in, minimum setbacks, and, and maximum system heights. We reviewed the comprehensive plan, um, and the staff report shows that the proposed amendment was in conformance with the goals and objectives of the two thousand and five comprehensive plan, including promote the use of alternative energy sources such as wind and solar. At the Plan Commission's, uh, April twenty-first meeting, they forwarded the case to city council with a unanimous recommendation to approve. to approve the amendment as presented, five ayes and zero nays. The findings are summarized in the staff report, including that the amendment would help the city of Urbana achieve its goal of community-wide net carbon neutrality by 2040, and would help fulfill the city's climate action plan by tuning permitting practices to minimize barriers to renewable energy. And then, city council has the following options in this plan case: to approve the text amendment as presented, to approve it modified by specific suggested changes, or to deny the text amendment. That is the end of my staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions for Marcus, Mary Alice.
Thank you, Marcus. You know, one thing in government is things change, and so we have to catch up with our policies.
Yes.
This is, this is great that you've spent so much time and effort to go through this process of incorporating this. There's really one, only one question I have, which is, thinking about the residential districts that the special use permit is allowed in, you know, R4, R5, all the way up to R7. Just your, can you read thought process behind that? Because if I heard you correctly, the only way to do it, if you have an R4 property, I'm just gonna take my neighborhood for example.
Sure.
A 60 by 120 lot, right, standard. You could, the only way you could do it is if you have aggregate multiple parcels together. So, I, is that, I mean, of course, you're gonna have different parts of the city that might, might, it might be more amenable to doing that.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
And so, yeah, if you could talk me through that, and then I am just gonna, R7's been a hot topic, and only, R7 only exists in a very, very small area. So I would also propose just kicking that off the list 'cause nobody's gonna aggregate those parcels, hopefully.
Well, so zoning is fluid. I would never anticipate that somebody would zone something as R7 in the future, but who knows? So, going back to say the R4, let's see. Okay. I have it hiding in this. Okay. And, so, we'll unhide that. So now, you can see, this is with the zoning turned on, okay? This property out here on South High Cross Road, that's R4, behind B3. Could make a great solar farm. It's zoned R4. Somebody requested it to be zoned R4 so that they could put residential behind a business. You could put a solar farm there. It could run for 20 years while we're waiting for somebody to put in a residential subdivision and a business in front of it, which may generate more revenue and/or be considered a higher and better use than the farming that is happening there now. So there are places where R4 is conducive to a solar farm. We don't pick which R4s, we just say R4, and then make it subject to a special use review, where you can say, this R4 parcel is a great R4 parcel for a solar farm. This R4 parcel is 60 by 120. A, it doesn't meet the 150-foot inverter buffer, so it would never be allowed unless you asked for a variance from the buffer. So you would have to do a lot of things to even make it happen. We don't have to worry about that because somebody is never gonna propose it. But, we're not going to say, this parcel's okay and that parcel's okay and that, 'cause that's not how planning works. We pick the appropriate zoning districts and go from there.
Okay, well, thank you for the example in terms of R4. I still would say, there's no reason to do R7 in here. I, I get that zoning is fluid, and here, you know, say the university decides PAR and FIR, no longer, those are R7. The, the, what can happen is you can just rezone it.
Yes.
Right, so, so for that reason, I think, I think striking that from this would be my suggestion.
And I don't, I, I don't think that that is an unreasonable suggestion.
Thank you.
Chandra.
Hi, Marcus. Would you mind going back to the slide where you had all the ag uses?
Like, this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So you had said, given the eligibility of places to have a solar farm, what is left for ag? It seemed like only the, yeah, the...
Probably the most likely place would be at the landfill.
Right. So if by right, ag uses permitted, why not, if, if this is right now the only place in the city to have it, why not just have everything special use? Why just...
So the, the purpose of having a zoning district where it's permitted by right, that smoothes things and makes things easier for a developer? Because it can be a proposal that's handled administratively? If you have determined that that zoning district type is not a high probability for incompatibility with adjacent land uses? So, yes, everything could be a special use permit, and then a developer would have to come to plan commission and city council for every spot in the city.
I just, since there's, this is the only spot, I just wondered why even have, for, for, by right for ag usage? If there's only this one spot?
A counterquestion could be, if this is the only spot, and it's okay, why not have it be permitted? But, yes, this also, you could say ag district is, could be special use permit as well. And again, zoning is fluid, things get annexed. The automatic conversion for zoning for county land that's annexed into the city is the similar zoning district. So if there's an 80-acre parcel or a 20-acre parcel next to the city that's annexed in, and it's zoned agricultural, it would get rezoned as city agricultural and would be permitted to have a solar farm on it. So, and people could request. For example, if we don't do anything, and they want to expand the landfill solar, they would have to rezone it from CRE, which doesn't permit electrical substations. They would have to zone it to something like ag that would allow an electrical substation as a special use. So zoning is fluid, don't expect it always to be there. You can, you know, it's a low proba- probability because it's a big deal to do a rezoning, but we have to plan in the future, not just exactly what's here now.
James.
So, I, I'm gonna tell you, I really appreciate the detailed presentation here. And I, I understand this is something that, that's needed. My first question's gonna be, what's the urgency?
The urgency right now is the landfill array would like to expand. They have a community solar...
Who owns the landfill right now?
The city.
Okay. 'Cause what I, what I'm concerned about, and I'm gonna tell you, this was a lot of additional information beyond what was in the packet. And I have, I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a final decision on this tonight because I'm absorbing a lot. I, I really don't understand. I'd like to hear the economic argument why a person who owned farmland would annex it into the city to put a solar array on it, because I cannot make the economics of that work. It's so beneficial to stay in county taxation and regulation, which already has well-defined solar array tax amendment. So I, the thing about the, I'm totally with Chandra about the question about, the only space that is ag is owned by the city. And so, you know, if we want to expand that array, there's gonna be a special use permit that we can approve for that.
Not currently.
Some of these things, some of these things feel like regulation without a purpose in, in here. I would, and I'm gonna agree with Mary Alice too, that some, some of the areas that we had include in here, I, I'm just not going to do that now. Be, I don't wanna add them now just because we think someone might do it. I would rather leave that for an argument some, to make the case why we should put it in later. That's just my feeling. I, I'm, I'm, I have, there's nothing here that I'm specifically against. I'm just not sure I've absorbed everything to ask all the questions I need to ask to, to make a final call on this tonight.
I believe you had a response, Marcus.
So, a expansion of the landfill solar facility would not be possible at this time without rezoning the blue CRE zoning district to agricultural or industrial or something else that allows an electrical substation. That is the, the dance that we did for the first solar array. And rather than continuing to do the logic dance of saying, a solar farm is like an electrical substation, which most people say they're not anything alike. Electrical substations may be an acre in size. There are transformers and things. It's not 10 to 15 acres of solar panels. Being proactively planning means adding these uses into the table of uses so that when somebody wants to do it, they can say, "Solar farm. Okay, I can do it in these districts. I know what special use permit I need, or I don't need a special use permit. I don't have to go to the zoning administrator and say, 'Do you allow solar farms?'" 'Cause your table of use doesn't have it in there. And then the zoning administrator would say, "Hmm, oh, electrical substation, we'll call it that." And then say, "Oh, sorry, CRE, you're gonna have to ask for rezoning, and then you have to go to city council to get the rezoning." And when you ask for a rezoning, you don't say, "I'm doing a rezoning to put in a solar farm." You say, "I'm doing a rezoning," and that allows you to do anything in that zoning district list. If they rezone it agricultural, it could be, I, I could dig through here, but it could say, "Oh, I want a large-scale livestock facility." And people are like, "Ooh, it's zoned CRE right now. That means conservation, recreation, education. Do we want perhaps a swine lagoon there?" So you try and minimize the potential future incompatibilities by reducing the size of the Pandora's box. So if you say, "Okay, you're allowed to do a solar farm in the CRE district," then people are left with the potential uses that they've been living with for the last 20, 30, 40 years in the CRE. They don't change it for ag. And then you say, "Submit me your site plan review for the solar farm." But right now, they would have to rezone it to something, and then get the special use permit.
Grace.
Thank you. A few questions. So on the map, that's the solar farm inverter zones with the 550-foot buffer and zoning with or without buildings. Those maps are, is that correct? That's essentially saying like the solar farm potential, in a sense? An area that would be fit space-wise for a larger solar farm? Is that what these maps are showing?
So these maps added in the 150-foot buffer to exclude small parcels, and it also excluded building footprints. So assuming that somebody wasn't gonna knock down a building to build a solar farm. And so this then attempted to give you the higher probability places where somebody could put a solar farm. So you look now at this property, where the cursor is, that's the ag-zoned area where the Little Vet Hospital is? Well, once you take out the 150-foot inverter buffers and the building footprint, there's no place to put the inverters. So that then no longer becomes a potential site for a solar farm.
And then it looks like there are some places in there, I don't, I don't wanna go into all the details, but just to kind of address Mary Alice's point, it looks like there are, there is stuff in this Lincoln area around campus that could physically have potential for a solar farm. And if it's under special use, it would come through the whole public process.
Right.
So, I mean, I just think a point of not ruling it out completely altogether when there could be physical possibilities of that.
Sure.
A few other questions about solar arrays. So I'm looking at Table 13.3, if I got my normal Roman numerals right. So it seems like building-mounted solar is just its own category, is that right? Solar array is just standalone, not building-mounted, is that correct?
Correct. So building-mounted, could be roof-mounted, it could be wall-mounted, it could be solar shingles, anything that's affixed to an existing building.
Okay, and that's all permitted by right in all zones with no requirements beyond that, right? And then the solar array allowed by right in all districts, just with certain things, and that would be like, for example, being in the back of the house in a residential area? Is that what this minimum setback would refer to?
Behind the front.
Yeah, behind the house.
Face in a residential district. And then it's gotta comply with any yard setbacks like any other accessory structure. And it can only be as tall as any other accessory structure.
Okay. And then another question was about screening. I thought from the plan commission meeting, and I think maybe I'm figuring this out as we go through, but I thought there was a change with, we're screening, but it's because now it's no longer defined as mechanical equipment, and there's this own thing for solar. So now the screening requirement isn't the same, is that how that worked?
So the, the screening requirement is now treating it like other similar-scale, possibly annoying uses like outdoor storage screening. We're treating it like a salvage yard or a construction yard where things are stored outside. And those are though only for ground-mounted systems. And it's for either residential or, it's only for solar farms. It's not for solar arrays. So principal use requires screening.
Okay, thank you. I have plenty of discussion and motion for further amendment, but I'll hold off on those, thank you.
Any further questions, Sharice?
I, I just have one question. When you were giving us the descriptions of everything and going over that map, did, did you say that cemeteries are agriculture?
I said that the cemetery is zoned agricultural.
As such, would that qualify as a solar something or other?
If whoever owned the cemetery wanted to put a ground-mounted solar array there, they could by right according to this. Now, whether they would or not is up to them.
So my question is then, does the city have the power to rezone or rename a housing for the deceased? Something other than agriculture?
Yes.
I mean, since we're not really growing anything there.
I believe the zoning administrator can apply for, you know, submit a rezoning, and it would go through the process with plan commission and city council. I'm not sure though who owns East Lawn, is that city property?
Well, even if it's not though, shouldn't it be something? I mean, we have residential, we have stuff labeled in residential areas that, and we don't own their property. I'm, I'm just thinking in terms of, should, should that, if nothing else, you know? I don't know. I just thought it, I, that it was, it was not zoned at all except as agriculture. And people do sell their cemeteries, I don't know, you know?
We don't really have like an institutional zoning. I'm, I'm not sure what you would rezone it as. You could perhaps zone it concert...
Sure, we can make something up.
Well, okay. Creating a new zoning district, as you've seen with the R7 zoning amendment, can you imagine what it would be like creating a new zoning? can you imagine what it would be like creating a new zoning district?
Well, there'd be nobody there to complain.
Okay.
Okay, we should focus back on the-
I'm just, no, I'm just pointing that out. It's just like, there's not, it's not like they're going to come and say, "Oh, we don't want that."
But loved ones might have opinions about what happens.
But my point is to, is to protect that particular, that particular, you know, to protect it from any kind of industrialization, to protect it from anyone actually being able to come in and say, "Well, this is what it's zoned as, so therefore..." You see what I'm saying?
I do. But, so, you know, the purposes of the city government is protecting the public health, welfare, and safety.
Yeah.
If a property owner came and said, "I would like to do this thing. I would like to build a parking space that's got covered parking and it's all solar," or "I want to create, you know, a, a large pergola area," or frankly, say, say it was a 10-acre cemetery and only the front half of it is currently occupied, and the rest of it is turf that they have to mow, and it's getting really expensive. Perhaps they could put solar on the back of it, generate revenue. It's not impacting the purposes of being a cemetery.
And I understand what you're saying there. It's just, I guess it just, it kind of worried me in the sense that, number one, if, if, if we don't have some kind of definition for that zoning, it just seems like that opens up a whole other can of worms, especially since we're saying it's agricultural. That's all. But, hey.
Well, at this point, I would entertain a motion to extend the meeting until 11:00, just to cover our bases.
Motion to extend till 11:00.
Hopefully, we won't go that late, but. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
So noted. As far as the issue, the topic before you right now, you have the option of making a motion, get that on the floor so that it can be discussed, or sending it to committee, which is always an option. This can't straight to city council. Is there a motion? Grace?
Hard one. I think I would like to move this to committee. I think it is great if something like this that has some kind of lasting implications can come to committee first, so we have another chance to look at it. I'm torn because I understand Marcus saying the kind of the sense of urgency, but I'm hoping that two weeks wouldn't be a major wrench in this plan. I do have specific motions for recommendations for amendments to this further, but for now, you're just asking for the motion, which would be for ordinance number 2022-05018, ordinance amending Urbana zoning ordinance, solar energy system text amendment, Plan Case 25, 24, 25T, 21, to committee as a whole.
I'll second.
Moved by Grace. I'll take Chris's second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That goes to committee on 23rd.
Do we still do discussion, or we'll just cut it there?
It already moved.
Save it for committee? Okay.
It's, there's not really a whole lot to discuss at this point.
The committee is next week, just to be clear.
Oh, that's right. We're in council. Okay.
Okay. Moving on to our last item, which is Resolution Number 2022-05-039R, resolution not to protest a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance. Second principal use telecommunications towers, CCZBA case 040-AT-22.
Good evening, everyone. I've got more about electrical substations, but actual electrical substations, not solar farms this time. So this is a proposal by the Champaign County zoning administrator to amend the county zoning ordinance to allow telecom towers over 100 feet in height as a second principal use on lots with electrical substations in the AG1 and AG2 districts by special use permit. County text amendments have the potential to affect zoning and land development decisions within the city's 1.5-mile ETJ, as the city has subdivision and land development jurisdiction in the area while the county holds zoning jurisdiction. The city has a right to file a protest to county text amendments by the date the case goes before the county board. In this case, that would be May 19th. Under state law, a municipal protest of a county text amendment would require 3/4 supermajority of votes for approval by county board, otherwise a simple majority is required. Urbana Plan Commission heard this case on April 21st and voted unanimously to forward it to city council with a recommendation not to protest. Staff agree with this recommendation, finding that it would not significantly affect land use or the city's ability to manage growth and development in the ETJ. A little background on why this is coming up right now. The Eastern Illini Electrical Cooperative operates five substations in the county, all outside of the ETJ. And they would like to add telecom towers to those lots to monitor the substations that already exist on those lots. And then an internet provider would also be interested in piggybacking on those towers, on those towers with antennas to provide rural internet service. None of these substations, and any substation that would currently, that would be affected by this proposal are currently in the ETJ. According to the county zoning administrator, all substations in Urbana's ETJ are operated by Ameren, who are actually exempt from county zoning as a public utility. The Champaign County Zoning Board of Appeals voted to recommend approval to the county board for this amendment in March, and the Environment and Land Use Committee voted to recommend approval last Thursday. And county board will make the final decision on the 19th of this month. This is the text of the proposed amendment. So telecom towers over 100 feet tall are already allowed in the county by special use permit in all districts except for I2 heavy industry, where they're allowed by right. Towers are not, however, currently allowed as a second principal use, as has been proposed. So this proposed amendment would limit second principal use towers to lots with electrical substations and only in the AG1 and AG2 agricultural zoning districts with a special use permit. And the city of Urbana would be able to submit comments on county special use permit cases within the ETJ. This is a map of AG1 and AG2 districts in the ETJ. That's the green areas. It's a majority of county land in the ETJ, which seems like a lot of potentially affected land. But again, there are currently no lots with substations that would be immediately affected. Although in the future, were someone other than Ameren to build a lot with a substation, they could then apply for a special use permit to erect 100-foot-tall or higher tower. So city staff reviewed the proposed text amendment and do not see any potential land use conflict in the city or ETJ. The city zoning ordinance table of uses currently allows telecom towers in the AG agricultural district with a special use permit and does not explicitly regulate tower height other than as part of the special use permit process. Section 13-1, the section on towers, states that antennas and towers may be considered a principal or accessory use, and that a different existing use of an existing structure on the same lot shall not preclude the installation of an antenna or tower on such a lot. So in short, the city zoning ordinance already allows for what the county is proposing to allow. There are some additional requirements for towers in the city related to the section on towers designation of the AG district as a residential zoning district. My assumption, looking at the districts where that's designated and looking at the table of uses, it's just districts where residential uses are permitted by right. So for example, the city zoning ordinance states that towers in residential districts that are near a lot with an actual residential use must be set back at least 200% of the tower's height from that lot with a residential use. This would potentially require greater setbacks than the county does. Otherwise, if there's not an actual residential lot nearby, it would just default to the agricultural general setback requirements, which would be less than the county requires. But any concerns over differences in setback requirements could be expressed to the county as part of the special use permit process. The city zoning ordinance also requires that anyone wishing to locate a tower in what it considers a residential zoning district has to demonstrate why no other location is suitable, because any of these towers under discussion would be there to monitor the substations on these lots. The condition for demonstrating no other suitable alternate location would presumably be met. So within the city's municipal boundaries, the proposed amendment does not significantly affect the use of land, staff find, nor does it affect the city's ability to manage growth and development, given again that our zoning ordinance essentially already allows for what the county is proposing to allow, and the city would be able to express any concerns over differences and things like setback requirements for any proposed second principal use tower in the ETJ. And again, there are currently no affected lots in the ETJ, although there could be in the future. So again, Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the case to city council with recommendation of approval. Staff concur. City council has the options to either not protest, not protest contingent upon specific provisions, or to protest the proposed amendment. In line with Plan Commission's recommendations, staff have prepared a resolution not to protest the proposed amendment. Thank you, and I can take any questions.
Questions for Nick. Chris?
Thanks for the presentation, Nick. From what I heard you say, these are only going to be internet towers?
So, I'm not an electrical engineer, so I don't know exactly how it works, but I understand it's not uncommon for electrical companies to install towers on lots with substations to monitor the operation of those substations and the electrical network. So that would be in part what it would be doing. But then in addition to that, there would be internet providers and potentially others down the road who might want to locate antennas on those towers as well.
Right, like radio stations?
Sure, yeah.
Law enforcement communications?
Yes.
Cell phone?
Yes, possibly.
Possibly. So if you build a tower, you can run it to whoever, right? Is that?
Yes. And I don't know exactly what the county's regulations are for a new antenna. I think that would be something that in the city, we would require a special use permit process for that. I think the county probably has a similar one. But I know what the city zoning ordinance does is it actually encourages co-location of antennas on a single tower so that every time someone wants to put up an antenna, they don't have to build an entire new tower.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Grace?
Thanks for the information on this. I was wondering if you could repeat/clarify, you said that currently, under the county zoning, that a telecommunications tower is already allowed as principal use?
Yes.
In AG zones by right, or is that special use permit?
By a special use permit.
Already by special use. So this is just making the addition of a second principal use, meaning if there's already an electric substation, now we can put in a tower. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And do you know if there was any, you know, research or anything done on like potential environmental impacts of new towers in these areas?
I'm not sure what environmental impact specifically you'd be referring to. I do know, just off the top of my head, that recently the Federal Aviation Commission changed the guidelines on what kind of lights you're allowed to put on telecom towers, which is supposed to be less harmful to birds. So I know that's something that probably wouldn't be as much of an issue with newer towers, but otherwise, I don't know the research. I mean, these are lots that already have electrical substations, so I think the addition of a tower would be, you know, it'd be maintaining a similar intensity of use.
Thank you. Yeah, I was referring to particularly birds, migratory birds, because that is an issue, and the lighting, and the height, and the wires and things can have a big impact on them in different weather conditions. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Question or motion?
Motion.
Okay.
But before I make a motion, I need to ask, are we sure that this resolution is written the way we want it to be written?
Yes.
It is.
I'm still confused if voting no to not protest means yes to protest.
If I understand this, the way this resolution is written, if we don't protest, we vote yes to this resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, if hypothetically, everyone voted no to not protest, does that mean protest then? And I think that was some of the issue, why we were phrasing it the other way.
I think you would have to motion to protest, and then we'd write a new resolution.
The way it's written, if you vote yes, you're voting not to protest.
All right, then. I will move approval of Resolution Number 2022-05-039R, resolution not to protest a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, second principal use telecommunications towers, CCZBA 040-AT-22. A vote of yes would say we don't want them to have a supermajority. A vote of no would say we do want to have them have a supermajority.
I'll second. Moved by Mary Alice. Second by Shandra. Discussion. Grace?
Thank you. This one, I'm a little torn on now. I think that I have overall concerns about kind of more allowable uses in the AG zones that don't necessarily need to be in those zones in particular. I think with this one, it makes sense because it's a secondary use, and like you said, using that land and sharing the towers. My concern would be for the bird wildlife, and also thinking that, I think this is also the wave of the future with automation of our electric grid and smart grid and micro grids, that you do need to have that monitoring and telecommunications with the substation. So I'm torn on this one. I can see where it's going towards the future and also have concerns about just other uses in the AG zones.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further items on this agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.